I gotta find it and then we'll go.
We'll begin the evening.
Judy, Judy chairs the planning commission.
What's that?
You chair board of adjustment, Judy's.
Judy's planning, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the, it's the planning commission first and so you, we're gonna take-
Right, I got the planning commission up.
Yeah, but Judy is the chair of the planning commission.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then you, you're the chair of the board of adjustment.
Yeah, all right, all right. Go ahead.
To, to, to people who don't know-
I'm just speaking it out.
We lost our chairs, our, our normal chair has-
I'm listening to the wrong side here, I guess.
We got it together.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order and first thing we'll do is approve the agenda and the minutes. Everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
I motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business? BFB management requests to amend an existing conditional use permit. Tim?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to amend an existing conditional use permit for the Tofti Homestead Plan Unit Development to be able to construct fourteen apartments and up to seven retail office spaces in Tofti. And I'll just go, there's a lot of reference material, but I'll go right to the considerations here. We get, "Tofti Homestead Plan Unit Development was approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2000. At the time of the PUD creation, lots above the cemetery road were zoned single-family residential while lots below the cemetery road were contained within the general commercial zone district. With the advent of the Tofti Town Center Planning, R1 is in that area now mixed, Tofti Mixed Use and the GC there is now the Tofti General Commercial. In general, the residential focus of the PUD for Bluefin, for Bluefin Bay is employee housing. In 2002, two land exchanges between Tofti Homestead and adjacent landowners occurred. In both cases, the exchanges were intended to enhance property boundaries thereby allowing landowner conformity with the Cook County zoning requirements. Though these property exchanges were ultimately reflected in a 2009 amendment of the CUP. In 2014, accommodations for two mini houses were reflected in a PUD amendment. This was later supplemented with a IUP interim use permit 2018 and for seasonal RV or recreational vehicle use." Other than the above-mentioned property exchanges, the commercial PUD has largely been left in a pre-PUD state. It includes frontage on Highway 61, two lots and an open space dominant Outlet A of the PUD. Given the projected changes to the development to the commercial components of the PUD, this request is intended to amend the CUP to reflect an increase in the number of livable units in Lot One, Lots One, and Two, from two to fourteen units while retaining commercial viability. Specifically, and I'll not necessarily read each of those declarations, the changes to the declarations, I think it's kind of legalese or word ease. On the surface, this appears to be a relatively minor change, one with supporting documentation and should be free of approval-based burdens. However, there are a number of complexities to consider, including traffic and parking, septic capacity, system design and open space requirements. In the memo provided by Wayne Henchy, who has reviewed and submitted the amended declarations, open calculations, parking, et cetera, Wayne has offered up a number of points that should be discussed for further clarification, but the biggest issue may be that of septic treatment. Assistant design has been submitted in conjunction with the CUP amendment application and is in review by the environmental health officer. But it does appear that there may be some issues with the existing system that needs to be inspected and resolved prior to full approval of the new septic design. We would expect a healthy discussion of this proposal before the planning commission and through that discussion, conditions for approval will be, expected to be developed, but at a minimum, if the planning commission were to recommend approval, that the septic system status and design be approved by the County, Cook County Environmental Health Officer. Ninety notices were sent out to adjacent property owners. At the time of this narrative preparation, we received comments from Jeff Lynch and Tim Garance, both of which were attached to your packet. We have the Minnesota, the MINDOT is not, have any objections to it and the concerns by the neighbors kind of focused around water usage, like well water usage and septic and things like that that were included. So, at that, I can turn it over to you. I did invite Mr. Henchy over, who has done a lot of extensive review on the actual plat and issues themselves, for any questions he might be able to have as well.
Okay. Is there someone here to represent the Bluefin? State your name and address, please.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Rizdal. I currently live at Temperance, 20 Temperance Landing Road in Schroeder, Minnesota. Can you hear me all right? I'm not used to speaking at a microphone or through a mask. So, yes.
Do you wish to add to what Mr. Nelson has said or clarify, explain? We may have questions.
Yeah. I think that you've received a very detailed and thorough package of information between the application and narrative that we, that we supplied, the very detailed analysis that Surveyor Henchy did and the context that, that staff has provided. So, my sense is there's not much to add and you maybe don't want to hear much more detail. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions or respond to any concerns. I do want to say that, that as I think probably know, I owned and operated Bluefin Bay from 1984, when it began until a year ago. And we looked long and hard to find who, the people we thought would be the best successor owners that would maintain the quality of the business and continue investing for the long-term good of the community. And I'm really happy to see this proposal come from the new owners and I've been assisting them and preparing it and working with some of the permitting and, and grant work just to help it be successful. It fulfills a plan that, a dream we had really back in 1999 when we purchased the Tofti Homestead, the original Tofti Family Homestead. As the year packet indicates, we built fourteen apartments back in 2000 and 2001. We had a plan not so different than this for the two lots on Highway 61, but somewhat scaled down in terms of the amount of residential units because we were building a lot of residential units at that time and we didn't see forward to the point when we would have such a critical additional need for housing as we do now. And the town of Tofti hadn't yet gone through its planning process, which happened in 2004 and 2005 and really created a vision, a bigger vision for kind of filling out the, the main street of Tofti than what we had in mind back in 99 and 2000. But I think this represents, I know this represents from my dealings with Joe Swanson and Papasossoni, the owners of BFB Management, who purchased the Bluefin family resorts from us, that they do have a long-term commitment to the better, betterment of the community and, and see themselves involved here for, as a lifelong involvement and they want to make good things happen for the community and this is a wonderful step, first step forward for them. I'm happy to see it and I certainly hope that you support it with, with your approval tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or speak to any concerns that any of you might have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to add just one thing. After the preparation and dispersal of the, the narrative, the Tofti Design Review Board did hold a meeting and reviewed the application last week, late last week and did, they approved it on their level. I wanted to just add that in.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this?
Craig Borak, Tofti Town Board Chair. Tim just said what I was gonna say, but speaking to the people of Tofti, there really isn't any, I haven't heard any negative comments about this project. There's a ton of support. Everybody's saying, "Hey, we need housing." There's not a whole lot of available housing in, in Tofti and these family apartments are gonna go a long way in helping us. This is an employee housing, these are, these are open to the public. So, I think there, it has the full support of the town board and it has the support of most of the residents of Tofti. I really haven't heard anybody that has had any bad thoughts about the project. It's a great project, but I just want you to know that we're hopeful.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay. Okay, we'll close it to the public and we'll ask the Board of Commissioners to, planning commission to ask questions and clarifications.
Thank you. Only thing that I couldn't find in here, maybe I'm, maybe I simply didn't get it, was the preliminary stormwater plan was there. It said there was gonna be one in here, but I, I didn't see it. Maybe I, maybe I'm missing it.
There should have been one in there.
There's a lot of parking and I notice, I take it, this is impervious, like concrete or blacktop?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, okay, that's it. I, I couldn't tell by the topo, it's so small, I couldn't read the, which direction it goes and I imagine it all flows towards the highway and the ditching is gonna go down that.
Yeah, the, the surface water gets conveyed to underwater containment vessels that disperse it out slowly into, into the subgrade and MINDOT has reviewed the plan and taken it into account as they've designed the, the new drainage that's going into place right now in conjunction with the bike trail construction.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Is there a provision for this remaining residential versus nightly rentals?
That's an interesting question and I, I know that, that the intent is, is to, to remain residential. The project is seeking MHFA grant money under their workforce housing program and it won't be built if it doesn't get that grant because it's just not feasible. And MHFA requires that at least one person in each apartment be a full-time, be full-time employed in the county. Now, we haven't seen the language of that requirement yet. The county, I think, certainly has the ability to, the authority to, to create a condition. I don't know if that would be in a developer's agreement or simply a condition of the approval of the, of the permit. I'm not, I'm not experienced enough in that to know how that's best handled.
Because I, you know, just being, looking down the road, these will be quite nice homes with a view of Lake Superior and I would like to retain the residential portion of it and not become another nightly rental. So, I would look to putting some language in there, a covenant or, you know, a minimum of ninety-day rental or even a six-month, which might be a little long. And not, not thirty because I can see snowbirds flocking to the new Lakeview apartments and leaving them vacant all winter. So, I, somehow I'd like to incorporate language that guarantees that it will remain a residential workforce housing. Tim?
Madam Chair, and just from a technical aspect, if, if we were to do something from the county standpoint on that, it should be actually a condition on, on the approval of the CUP or the approval of the amendment as opposed to something in the declarations because the declarations can be changed and they're, they're a private enforceable matter whereas the condition of the approval would then, if we do find that it's not meeting the condition of the approval, it would come back to the planning commission for discussion about what, what to do about that.
Commissioner Machiavich, there has been discussion in previous meetings about how this might be, how this restriction might be created and a recommendation that there be a requirement similar to that put in place with the Four Directions Housing Project in Lutzen where I believe they have to show once a year proof that, that at least one resident is, is, has full-time employment. So, it seems that that mechanism has been defined and it already exists, so it might be simpler to, to borrow upon that.
Okay. All right. And then, of course, the septic, it would really be nice if there were city water and sewer that ran through there.
Well, we'll have the closest thing to city water that exists anywhere out there.
Right.
Five or six years ago, we bored under Highway 61 and connected all of Tofti Homestead to the, to the water system that serves Bluefin Bay. And that's all taken from Lake Superior and filtered and purified under Minnesota Department of Health guidelines and, and supervision. The septic is gonna have to be treated on-site because as you know, there is not a community septic system.
Right.
And the Bluefin system doesn't have the available additional capacity to handle this additional wastewater.
Okay. Well, that's good. Any other questions? Any questions about the changes in the conditional use permit? Can you explain the third amendment? What, why, what, what we're looking at? What the change is? What the difference is?
Well, I guess I have to agree with the Tofti folks. I think this is a good proposal. The devil's in the details. It would be nice to know if trailers are allowed in the parking around Lots One and My wife and I have an apartment and they've excluded trailers from showing up. And a lot of people have ATVs, just the hall lumber or whatever, just wondering if trailers will be allowed in the use of operative vehicles.
Yeah. Not talking mobile homes or campers, could be campers.
Exactly, yeah.
There are, you know, and maybe a consideration, I can't see putting that, that's pretty fancy real estate, maybe putting those in a separate, less congested area, maybe fenced. There is a fenced yard over, by the school that might consider putting excess trailers and things in there. But maybe, Dennis, can you clarify?
Well, I have to say, I didn't, that hadn't crossed our minds until reading Mr. Henchy's report, but I think it's a, you know, it's an interesting concern. The use of Tofti Homestead apartments just hasn't produced that kind of extra vehicles. I don't know, I think generally it's people that are not as established in their lives and their careers and they haven't acquired boats and snowmobiles and, and, and other recreational vehicles yet. But it certainly could happen. And if it came to be a problem in the, in the, with the operation of the property, the declaration provides for rules and regulations to be promulgated for the betterment of all users and residents. So, I, I would think that would be the best way to handle it. Certainly, it's gonna be in the interests of the owners and the residents to contain a problem like that before it gets disruptive.
Right. Good it came up. Do you have other things, Wayne?
There was some vague language in the declaration about garages and I don't see any provision anyplace for garages.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're referring to the original declaration as amended in 2009 that-
The current one.
Yeah. So, there are some other buildings on, in this PUD that do have room for garages and there were, I think there was language allowing for those to be built at some point in the future. That hasn't been done, but it could be. But there aren't any garage sites provided for in these two lots and the limited common element that, that provides a lot of the parking for them. So, there is, there isn't the possibility of building them here.
Okay.
It's kind of a, a fun one, but there's a, a statement in there that, about animals. And I know if you have a barking dog next door, sometimes that's a problem. They define animals as all creatures except humans. Now, we've had people here in Cook County that have had cougars as pets. I was just wondering if, if they fleshed out at all. I, I know it's at the advice of the, the association, but is there anything to date specifying a little bit further how this animals will be treated?
I think maybe, am I correct in assuming this will be owned by the Bluefin management?
It'll be owned by the owners of the Bluefin Bay.
So, they will be the landlords and they will dictate the conditions of rental.
Correct.
Are animals allowed at the Tofti Homestead that's currently?
They were earlier on, but we've been, we've been convinced that that's a bad idea and they're currently not allowed in the existing apartments.
So, I, I would believe that probably would transfer to these where, these are owned only by Bluefin. So, there's one owner and to amend the covenants, that owner can change them.
Right, that owner can-
The renters do not get a vote, I guess that's why.
Right. That owner can amend the declaration, but that owner can also put forth rules and regulations as long as they're reasonable under the law, under uses. And I, I would expect cougars probably won't be allowed.
Pretty comparable. Okay.
At first, I thought sixty-one parking spaces was a lot, but the more I got to thinking about it with all the commercial space that they've got and during holiday traffic, the fourteen residential, residential units, you could have, especially if you allow some parking of trailers, sixty-one parking spaces could disappear real quickly. I just, I don't even know if screening from the highway is possible.
Well, there are fourteen units, one, two and three-bedroom units, a couple more one bedrooms than three bedrooms. So, if you assume two cars per unit, that's twenty-eight and that leaves, what, thirty, thirty-three for employees and, and customers of the commercial spaces. There are some days though when there's never enough parking in Cook County, but they're not the majority of days and people work it out. And to take up more open space to create more parking that would be necessary on a limited number of days of the year just didn't seem like a good trade-off to us. I think at sixty-one, it'll be probably on the more generous side of the, of the parking given the, given the needs of other developments.
And am I correct in assuming the bike trail will provide pedestrian access to this project?
They're building it as we speak.
I know.
Yeah.
I know.
Yes, it will.
So, that will, and I see curbs and gutters and it'll be a, so, and there will be a fair amount of pedestrian traffic around there.
There will. And, you know, a lot of the retail customers will be staying very close by and people-
Yeah, maybe upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs and across the street. And next door at the American and there, now will be very convenient and safe-walking paths and biking paths that will allow access by all, from all those locations to the site.
Anybody else have questions?
I, I do. I just want a clarification. Is the primary access, is there, is, do you expect any more congestion on the Homestead Road or is this primarily just all accessed off the highway?
The original plan put forth to MINDOT included two highway accesses for this property. MINDOT really wanted to diminish it to one and, and they shifted it slightly to the west so it, it aligns right across from the road that goes kind of by the post office to the fire hall.
Yep.
So, they'd have really a, you know, an intersection there where cars were turning in, in, on and off Highway 61 in the same place. So, yeah, there's gonna be more cars because there's more people living there and there's new businesses, but MINDOT's really trying to control that and contain it into, into fewer turnouts than have traditionally been in existence along there.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question for Tim or just maybe, or any one of you, a little bit of wordsmithing on how to address the septic, seeing that it's approved before this would, how, how do we word at that condition?
Wouldn't that be an administrative?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Loa, we are, that is something that would routinely put in, but it is a kind of a safety valve that is inherent in, in the business because, you know, even if we approved fourteen units or twenty-one units or whatever, if the septic capacity, when it finally comes to the point of being able to put a system that can only support nine or whatever, that's what the cap is. And most of the development along the North Shore of Lake Superior and even inland is really governed, the density of it's governed by the septic capacity able to do it. And generally, when the conditions are put in to the, to an approval, it would basically be that the, that the property be in compliance with Minnesota statute, or Minnesota Rules Chapter 7080 and the Cook County Septic Ordinance and you can add in prior to construction.
That for sure gets any of my concerns. I'm just, just making sure it's there. It's, it's implied, but that's, I think this looks like a great plan and that's the only real concern I see is making sure that it's, the water treatment, the, the capacity is adequate. So, this looks great and I would-
Okay.
Like to motion to move it forward, wish to approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification for the motion in the second to include what conditions because you had mentioned a condition about the rental or length of rental and then the condition about the septic.
Can I add on my motion? Just a clarification that I would like to include compliance with Minnesota Statute 7080 prior to, demonstrated compliance prior to construction. Does that meet the, I believe? And does that work for?
Not exactly aware of that statute, but I'm gonna trust Mr. Nelson, knowledge on that.
And then the condition that it be utilized for residential use only. I don't know how, Dennis had the, the covenant or the restriction that is placed on the housing that the one roof is building. If we use- If we utilize that, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Or just not rentals for less than 90 days.
Eight. Does that work for...
Any of those works, because...
We don't have the other language in front of us.
No.
So, I'm not comfortable saying I want to include that without seeing it, so...
Anne?
Madam Chair, I would want to consider maybe six months rather than three months, to think about that. What the EDA has done with one roof has required a pay stub to be turned in with the rent. That's another way you could go.
Okay. I'm thinking six months is a little long, because there are college students that come and work seasonally, and I can see this being utilized for that. Maybe four months.
If I might add, we do have, we, it's not we, I have to keep thinking the new pronoun there, have J-1 students come in both the winter and the summer.
Right.
And J-1 students are college students who are coming to work during their summer, and they typically can work up to four and a half months. So, it's somewhat likely they'll have people from the northern hemisphere here from June through late September, and a month after, six weeks after they leave, people from the southern hemisphere, who are now in their summer vacation, will come and work from December through middle of March or April. So, it would be nice to allow for that, because that is the realities of employment in Cook County right now, that we really need those visa workers. So, maybe four months or something like that as a minimum?
I would put it at four.
Okay.
And, and an annual verification that that's the use, what's being done, just like you said with the apartments.
I don't know how. I know that there are some, some visa students that have lived at Four Directions, and if I recall correctly from the EDA meeting, I think Mary said that once a year, they require people to prove that they're employed in Cook County, either self-employed or employed by a W-2 employer. I don't know how they handle less than one-year tenancies. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. And I believe the intent is that this is looking at, you know, housing that will be for a substantial period of time. I believe that's the need that the community is seeing.
And for people working in Cook County.
Yeah.
And that kind of eliminates the vacation...
So, if we can just cover that, but I think that's very important to make sure we emphasize that.
All right. How would you like to amend your motion?
I want it to be very enforceable and defined. I'm, you know, so what, four months would be 120 days?
Yeah.
I'd like it to be a day, not a month limit. That's, if we don't get into the weeds there, so...
A minimum.
So, 120-day, condition two, 120-day minimum rental period. Does that...
Right.
Get the point, but enforceable?
And, and like Dennis says, the Minnesota housing has their own language that they'll have to abide by as well, but this protects Cook County.
That would for...
And I agree, second.
And you seconded it? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay? And it looks like maybe adjourning is next. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay.
Thank you very much for your consideration and approval this evening. We really appreciate it.